Everybody ready to start? Thank you. One allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Where's your gavel, madam?
Ah. I'll just yell. So, um, welcome, everybody. Mayor Smith could not be here. But I will start off with a couple of announcements, and Mark is going to help me with the first one.
I'll do the AV on this side.
Yes, he's going to do the AV. So I 19th to celebrate Irvington, and businesses should know that they can do special things out on the sidewalks. People who want to sell lemonade on the sidewalk, you can do it. You want to sell your handmade jewelry, you can just find a nice little place. And if you're a business and you want these little cards to promote it, I can get you some. But one special thing that's happening at 12 noon on that day is...
Okay. 12 noon on that day, we are announcing the winners of the PSA video, pedestrian safety video contest, which was started almost three weeks ago. The, um, there are nice prizes. There's some money involved, and there's some showing of the selected work. And, uh, what else can I say? Oh, the deadline is this Friday, so hurry up, get stuff in. We were trying to avoid hitting the finals week, so hopefully people still have some, a little bit of bandwidth to be able to get it in. It's open to sixth graders to 12th graders. And, uh, the two forms...
Friday, June 10th? Because you're... For this Friday?
Friday, June 10th.
Because everybody watching this won't know what today is.
Thank you. That's right. I didn't say June 10th. Oh. Thank you. And, um, there are two submission formats, one of which is under 30 seconds or very short, some, you know, like a six-second vine or something. And then there's a long, or 15-second Instagram, something like that. And then there's a long form, 30 to 60 seconds, which is more of your kind of standard public service announcement. So...
Thank you.
We have a question from the audience, yes.
Is it open to Irvington residents who do not go to Irvington Public Schools?
Actually, we decided yes. If they were school age and they're in, like, masters or something like that, but they're still... We said, why not?
So this is a great opportunity for parents and grandparents to stick that application on somebody's pillow at home and encourage these creative kids to do this.
One other thing, if you're looking for the application, because we do need to have parental sign-off on this stuff, the application is on the Facebook page. So go to Slow Down Irvington on Facebook, and it's a pinned post. You can't miss the application and rules. So, thank you.
Okay. There's a second announcement that I've added. I've actually added, um, two other announcements. One is, um, a notice from the town of Greenberg that Irvington residents should certainly be aware of. It relates to the review process regarding the reassessment. And there is, there is information that has become made, is available from Greenberg, but we will also put this on our website. It has to do with the next important date, and I'll just read this very quick message from Paul Finer regarding this. "Please call 9-8-9-1-5-2-0, the assessor's office, to request a meeting with the assessor. If you are not satisfied with the assessor's decision, she can modify assessments and make changes. You should file agreements by June 21st at 9:00 PM." So that's, that's the key next date. This is if you have agreements, of course. So we'll put that also on our site, but, um, there's lots of information on the Greenberg site, but it can be on our site as well. The third quick announcement is just to make people aware that they received in, in the mail this water quality. Did everybody get this, other than me? But this is a really good piece of information. It's carefully done. It's from our water department. And since there's been, there have been many things in the news, of course, very disturbing things about water quality, but this should give people comfort that there is quite a bit of testing, very thorough testing here, and also that there is why save water and how to avoid wasting it, another good effort in here. So that came out, and people should take a look at it. It's really amazing how much stuff there they do.
In line with that, there's water-saving tips also on the Village website right now under, uh, the directory or the URL, Waterwise. And that's actually takes, it's an extension of what's in here in terms of all the types of water saving you can do.
Mark is on top of that. I would also make, just quickly, I'm going to note that there's, there's another item on the agenda after number 11. This is going to be a resolution that we are going to discuss about supporting the state legislation that's in process. Right now, it's the residential reevaluation exemption state legislation. We're going to talk about that after number 11. Okay. I'm going to move on to correspondence, and then we'll do public comment. We have two pieces of correspondence. They both refer to the, um, the Astor Buck petition for a zoning change on South Buckout Street. One is from Kevin Gallagher. He's at 77 South Buckout Street. He provides a lot of, um, information about different issues related to this, and he, um, he opposes the, uh, the change of zoning. And the second one is for Mr. Ragginanthin, and he opposes the attempt to change the zoning for that reason. And I thought he ends it with saying, "I'd like to take the opportunity to thank the mayor and the members of the board for their ongoing service in providing excellent village government with fiscal restraint." So, um, those are the two bits of correspondence. Is there any public comment?
Just one other thing. These letters are available on the...
Oh, sure.
As support material for this, for tonight's agenda, so if you want to see them in detail.
Right, right, right. Yes, I'm summarizing, of course, and anyone who wants to see the whole thing, or if somebody's here in person who wants to read their full letter, that's always a possibility. Okay. Does anyone like to make public comment? Ms. Jill Rembar.
Thank you. I'm Jill Rembar. I live on Sunnyside Place, and I have a question. Hello? Okay.
That's good.
Thank you. Okay, the question is about parking, actually, but it's not about Astor Buck, which I apologize for not having paid attention. So I don't know anything that's going on, that much that's going on. I tried to read through some of the minutes, um, which, recently. In any case, my question's about parking at the train station, and if you, and if you can tell me... I know that parking at the train sta... Well, I found out that the parking at the train station's no longer, no longer village managed. It's Metro North, which sends it out to Laz Parking. So you may not know, but do you have a clue how long the waiting list is? I mean, like, how many weeks or months or years the waiting is?
No, we don't, we don't know, but I have heard that they have a waiting list, and I don't think it's that short. But I don't know the details.
Okay. Well, I mean, though, it's not a, it's not a... Sorry, I should have supplied what I know first. There are, I think there are 254 spots.
There's two, two, of course, there's the Ardsley on Hudson. You don't mean that.
Right.
You mean the one right here.
I'm talking about Irving... So I recently had cause to find out what I could find out, so I'm hoping to find out more from you. But Ardsley Train Station, I think, has 115 spots altogether, and they have 54 people on the waiting list.
That's ours. And that one, we do organize.
Right. Like, we don't, right. So Irvington doesn't have a... So a one, a request or a recommendation? I don't know. If on the Village website where it says you can pick up your parking application here, it doesn't say there's no parking available anywhere. Like, it says, send in the application, you know, and then you'll find out later, but I think it's really good for anybody to know who wants to park anywhere in Irvington that you can't. So it would be useful if you said, there's, there are currently no spaces in any of these things that we have listed on or something in some way. And also would be very helpful if, when somebody goes to the website for parking, to say, we don't manage the parking at the train station, because that information also I had to get somewhere else.
At the Irvington Train Station.
At the Irvington Train Station. Right, right. But it doesn't, you know, I was trying to figure out which, does Buckout mean the Irvington Train Station? Anyway, I figured it out, but it would be helpful if, you know, that's easily available. And the Irvington Train Station has, I think, 200... Can't remember whether it's 15 or 54 spots available. I mean, spots altogether, but there are 122 on the waiting list, including on the 122. I asked them, how many... Okay, so here's my question. I spoke to a friend who, two years ago, was number 65 on the waiting list, and it took her nine months to get a spot. So now I'm 122 on the waiting list, but she said she was number 65, and she was the last one. So in two years, the waiting list has gone from 65 to 122? With some... So anyway, I'm thinking I might be six years on the waiting list. Anyway, just trying to get more information, and I wonder if... And, you know, I don't know what you're planning, and I don't know what that has to do with Astor Buck, or if anything. And then somebody else told me that Metro North recently sold some spots to Astor Buck. Is that also true?
I think Astor Buck rents spaces from them, yes.
So Ast... And that was, was that with our approval? Or did they just, or that had nothing to do with us?
We have nothing to do with it.
So they... So maybe you could...
This has been long term, that wasn't recent. Hasn't that been the case for a while?
First of all, I don't, I don't want you to be under the impression that the parking lot is owned by the Village but managed by Metro North. It's neither owned nor managed by Irvington.
Okay.
It never was owned by Irvington.
Okay.
Well, the little lot, you don't mean that.
Okay.
I'm talking about the main lot.
The big lot you're talking about.
So who they, who they lease their spaces to, we have no control.
Okay, so, okay, so, um, I understand that, and if we could have any influence about them not selling any more spaces to people from out of town, maybe we could, you know, maybe we don't have anything to do with it, but maybe we could have something to do with it. So if there's some way that we could find out what Metro North is ever planning and get first dibs, or say we want to be informed, or maybe bid, there may be people who are interested. So the fact that we have nothing to do with it maybe doesn't mean that we should have nothing to do with it. That's my request for you to please look into that.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay. Does anyone else have public comment? All right. We next have item six is the consent agenda. I understand we want to pull out the minutes of the Village Board meeting out of the consent agenda. I think Administrator Shocker has something that he wants to add or amend on that.
Yeah, so I have a, I have a correction for a resolution that is, was done. Actually, it was an executive session resolution related to the termination of the contract for this building. And what I left off from these minutes was that, in addition to terminating the contract, that you were authorizing me and a Village Administrator to execute all documents related to the termination.
So now that we've discussed that, can it stay in the consent?
Just, you can vote on it separately. I think that's what Connie's prepared to do.
Right, so with that change, this is at the end of our notes here under the contract with Cal, Caladri Construction. We add and authorize the Village Administrator to execute any all necessary documents in connection with this termination. That, I would move to accept the minutes as amended by that addition. Second? All in favor? Okay. The rest of the consent agenda includes an appointment of the fire department officer, an appointment of part-time seasonal employees in the recreation and parks department. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, we're moving to number seven. Number seven, public hearing to consider a local law amending Chapter 213 of the Irvington Code, vehicle and traffic, to extend a 15 mile per hour school zone. So, um, let's see. I'll make a motion to open the public hearing. Do I have a second? Are all in favor?
Yeah. Do we need Mary Ann at all to describe the action?
Yes, and I think we will move to ask, now that we've opened the public hearing, and ask Mary Ann if you're able to give us a little background on this local law to amend Chapter 213.
Yeah. Right now, the code has the speed limit in the school zone is still 15, 15 miles per hour, but the zone is currently on the books is from Main Street, from Northern South Dearman to Northern South Ferris. This would extend it from Northern South Dearman to 100 feet east of North and South Cotton Street. The, the New York State law permits that length. There's only certain, like, where is it? 321?
1,320. Yeah, it's a quarter, quarter of a mile.
320 feet to be a school zone, and this extends it to 1,320.
Okay. All right. From my colleagues here on the boards, are there any discussion on this issue?
Just that, you know, the Traffic Calming Committee has come up with some additional aspects of this process. Once that gets set, you know, we already have a radar speed sign up in front of Village Hall, but we also suggested that the 15 mile an hour speed signs be placed in appropriate places. You know, the smaller white ones on both sides of Main Street. So not just where you're coming down off of Broadway, but also when you're coming up from the train station, you'll see that, because it's speed limits on both sides, it's not just, you know, downhill. So that kind of stuff. So we'll be talking about that, actually, next Wednesday, in a little bit more detail. But it's a great first step to get this zone extended for safety. You know, they say that just a difference of five to 10 miles an hour is a significant difference in injury results on a pedestrian that's been hit, you know? So to bring the speed down is a very good thing.
So the Traffic Calming Committee is fully supportive of this change in the local law? Needless to say.
I totally support this. This is a very, um, good research that we could extend it that far, and how to place the boundaries and how to just maximize the, where they are is going to really work to keep traffic slow all the way down Main Street. That's really good.
My, my comment is that, I think, I asked Mary Ann this, and it's confirmed that this speed limit applies whether school is open or not. This is 24/7. This is always 15 miles an hour. So whether it's the weekend or Sunday morning, that's what the public should have in mind, assuming we pass this law tonight. All right, I could open it to the public. If anyone has a comment related to this, this is a public hearing regarding this local law? Yes, please come up.
Kathy Hoffman. Thank you so much. I'm so happy that, thanks for doing that.
Come up to the mic.
Thank you for doing that research. That, that's really important, that we make use of every opportunity to get that traffic slowed there. And I'm, I'm just really pleased about it. I wanted to also say that, that I want to also say, I'm just, I think we're moving in the right direction. I think if we can get enforcement, that's what's going to really... It's one thing to have a sign. It's another thing to have a sign that's invisible, that's definitely stepped in the right direction, and then, but then enforcement sends a stronger message in terms of, you know, that, that really reminds people that we expect this type of behavior. So I really hope that we can move in the direction of getting better enforcement as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Hoffman. Any other public comment on this?
I was going to say, Jean Belch.
Your name!
Jean Belch, from Dutchy Street. I was going to ask about enforcement as well, because I live on Main Street, and it appears that people are not driving. Like, I've gone up going 15, I've gone up going 20, I've gone up 20, 25, and people are still ramming into me practically. So I feel like enforcement is more important, do you know what I'm saying? Even with it being 25 now, it appears people are going way faster than 25.
Okay. Thank you.
One thing to mention, you know, this, the Slow Down Irvington Traffic Calming Initiative has been picked up by the River Towns and Greenberg, and, you know, it's now called, for them, it's called Slow Down River Towns. I think we're still Slow Down Irvington, just because we have Rip. But my point was that they were very clear that it takes both, two problems, both in for, uh, public education outreach and, and enforcement. You can't, you need, you need both aspects of it. So I totally agree with, we need to ensure that we have enforcement, but we also have to make sure that people realize the speed limit has actually changed. So we're going to have to make use of things like from the mayor's desk and, you know, other kinds of e-blasts and other ways of getting the word out, so people aren't caught unaware of the change.
Right, and from Dearman to just a little up from Cotton, is that's the way it... Right, from Dearman to Cotton, essentially, is the way to think of it.
Around Black Cat, right? It's not where it is?
Yeah, yes. All right. Any other public comment? Mr. Hannah?
I'll just, uh, I'm Michael Hannah from South Buckout. I am also very thankful that this is being considered, and I hope you will support the law to extend the 15 mile an hour zone. As you point out, there's, uh, there's been a number of steps in terms of both in Irvington and the River Towns to, to think about the balance of traffic and pedestrian safety. And one of the comments you hear from a number of parents is, in terms of letting their children go on Main Street, is just the fear of, you know, of, you know, the dangers for children. And I think there was a, you know, one other thing that's been happening is the walking school bus, which has been a lot of fun, very popular, and has given, I think, a number of parents and children encouragement to, to walk to school. And so I think this is one more step to, to giving reassurance to, to the children and to the parents. So thank you very much. The sign with the radar has been very helpful. I didn't know, I didn't even know it was 15 miles an hour until recently, and now every time I go down, I'm, I see it every time. So it really does make a difference, these measures that you're taking. So, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Yeah, and the cooperation between the schools, working, walking school bus and this effort, it, I think that, you know, it's maybe a cliche, but it does take a village to make all this happen.
I looked out my window. I heard, in the mornings now, I hear noises, a group of kids are walking by, and I realize all at once, oh, it's the walking school bus. Yeah, even on Harriman, I guess.
All right. Any other public comment? Then I would move to close the public hearing. Do we have a second? Mark? All in favor? Okay, so that means I think we're ready to read the resolution, and our board can, can vote on it. So, resolve to adopt a local law amending Chapter 213 of the Irvington Code, vehicles and traffic, to extend 15 mile per hour school zone. So I will move that. And do I have a second on that? All in favor? All right, so 15 miles an hour. All right, next item. Approval of license and operating agreement with the farmer's market with the Irvington Union Free School District. This is, so a little background on this. Larry, did you want to give us a little background? I think it's the same as what we've been doing.
Yeah, yeah. So the, the farmer's market exists in the school parking lot, based upon a lease agreement with the school, and we are executing that for this season, same agreement as in the past, and I believe Mary Ann's reviewed it and found acceptable.
Okay. So, um, why don't I just move... I think the fee is $2. The village, or the village pays the school district.
It's a valid fees of, of, I don't know.
Again, it takes a village, right?
It takes dollars.
Okay, so I'll make the motion, resolve to approve a lease and operating agreement between the Village of Irvington and the Irvington Union Free School District for the use of the Main Street School Parking Lot by the Irvington Farmer's Market, and to authorize a Village Administrator to execute said agreement. So I'll move that. Do we have a second?
Second.
Yes, thank you. And all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so that is passed. So we have the first farmer's market this Sunday, and the second one tomorrow. Okay. Number...
The second one tomorrow.
The second, the, the first farmer's market was this Sunday.
You said yesterday.
Tomorrow. Oh. I meant yesterday. The next one is next Sunday. Well, let's have one tomorrow, too.
Yeah, exactly.
All right. Number nine, award of contract 2016-11 for the purchase of STORES Hydrant adapters with caps for the Hydrant Connections retrofit project. I think I'm going to ask Larry to give you a little background on this.
So this, um, this adapter that is being purchased is just that. It makes the existing hydrants more interoperable with, with other departments that may have different thread standards than us. So it makes them more, more universal. The, you may also notice on your, on the dais there that there is a, an agenda and a resolution related to this, and that the resolution that was attached to the agenda originally on Friday was basically blank. The, uh, the department, one of the requirements of the winning bidder was that they submit a sample item, so that the fire department can test it and make sure the threads fit correctly and, you know, that everything works properly before they order several hundred of these. And that test unit was a little bit late in arriving, so they got it on Thursday and tested it over the weekend. So I couldn't, I couldn't tell you what the answer was going to be tonight until, until this morning. So the resolution that you have there does award the contract to the low bidder, was successfully tested, and you have it in front of you.
Yeah. Any, any comments by my colleagues here about this resolution?
I think it's pretty straightforward. Pretty straightforward.
Okay, I'll read it. Whereas sealed bids were received and opened on April 27, 2016, at 11:00 AM in Village Hall as follows. There are five bidders with Coastal Fire Systems, Inc., at $118 per unit. There are five bidders total. The price range is up to $131.25. So I'll continue. Whereas the Village Administrator received the bids submitted and determined that the lowest bidder is in order and responsive to the specifications, they're, therefore resolved that the clerk treasurer is authorized to issue a purchase order for the purchase of Hydrant adapters at the unit, unit price of $118 each from Coastal Fire Systems, Inc. So I'll move that we accept that.
Question, how many of these are we talking about? Because there's a huge difference in the overall contract amount between the high and low, low bidder and the next one, which is only a dollar difference per unit?
Yeah.
I'll have to double check here.
Yeah, 42 to 44. How many fire hydrants do we have?
And how many adapters does each one need?
Each one needs one, I assume. Unless there are, like, two sides to it.
Yeah, I... It's in the neighborhood of 360, but I'm not sure why the differential is that way.
So you think the purchase price math here might be... So we're paying the unit price. That's what we are agreeing to in this resolution.
Yeah, the purchase price is actually just supposed to be an extension of the number of units that we're purchasing.
So it would be if you divided...
Yeah, it should be 360.
42, 600 by 118, you'd get some number. What would that be? Who's the math whiz here? I know, I know somebody in this room.
Well, so about 350.
Okay, all right. It's a lot of fire hydrants.
But the $1 difference...
Right, yeah.
That's, that's... Really?
And the next one?
That should only be, sorry.
360.
There's a dollar difference.
I didn't figure it out. It's roughly 360.
I got 60, 361 on the first.
It's roughly 360.
Wow, you did that in your head? Okay.
So if the math is wrong on these other ones, it really doesn't matter for this resolution anyway.
No, it doesn't. The purchase price for the first item, it doesn't change the bid. It's 43,660. There's 370 units being purchased.
370 being, oh, okay.
Yes, now, the, the second item is, comes out to 370.
Yes.
Okay, so that's right.
Yeah, but, but the unit price is the unit price.[1772.28] Yeah, but the unit price is the unit price.
All right, all right. So, as I read the resolution, we're good with that, and I just, so, I move that. And do I have a second on that? All in favor? Okay, so...
I guess the math works out.
So, Coastal Fire Systems, 370 adapters, good. All right, number 10, review of a draft of a local law regarding appearance tickets. So, this is something we haven't really discussed. And we, I think what all we need tonight, we're not going to be voting on anything, but we could use some background, I think Larry or Mary Ann or whoever would like to provide us with some background.
Yeah, well, right now, the code, this would add a section to the code on who's authorized to issue appearance tickets. Right now, the, I guess the only two sets of people allowed to issue appearance tickets are the police, and they're permitted, they are by the criminal procedure law, and the building department, and they're granted the authority by the building construction provisions of the code. But there's occasions that you want appearance tickets issued, maybe in the park or for some DPW violation. And the only way you could do it now really is to get the police. And this would, because the building inspector could only give them for buildings. So, the main provision here is 1-10, it says, in addition to those persons authorized by the criminal procedure law in Chapter 95 of this code, which I just talked about, the following persons are hereby authorized and empowered to issue and serve appearance tickets in the Village of Irvington, the village administrator, the superintendent of public works and his or her designated, water and sewer superintendent, the fire inspector, the superintendent of parks and rec, and the brandy, the village's clerk treasurer. Don't pay attention to the italics here. The reason there's italics in here, because usually I put it, italics for new language, this was a second draft. So, the italics said it changes over the first draft, but it's all new.
So, all of these are new additions?
It's all new, right. As I said, the only, there's no provision in the code right now for appearance tickets. And the question was, how can we authorize these other people to issue tickets? And this was the most disappointing to us. And then, and then the second section, and I'm going to suggest adding a phrase here, now I suggest saying, I had a phrase here. The following laws may be enforced by the issuance of appearance tickets, and here's the phrase I did, pursuant to this article. And then it would be on New York State, Westchester County, and a Village of Irvington laws, including the Uniform Fire Prevention Building Code and the Code of the Village of Irvington, except not the Vehicle and Traffic Chapter, Vehicles and Traffic Chapter, because they don't want police officers to issue those tickets. But I don't want to deprive them of the authority altogether, which is why we said pursuant to this. And then the information to be included is just the standard stuff that would be in an appearance ticket, I mean.
So, you should be, you should know the reason for this really stems back to some discussions that the board has had periodically over time about enforcement of quality of life type items in the code, like dogs off leash or the number of dogs that are being walked at any given time. And there's a whole variety of codes that you've talked about, that the board has talked about, the need for enforcement, and it seemed not to be necessarily the best use of resources to use only your police to enforce those types of laws. And so, we felt that this would give us some flexibility to be able to come up with other ways of doing that. That doesn't mean we're going to have a, you know, a $9 an hour minimum wage summer employee running after people in the woods, but there's other ways of doing it that don't have to involve your police necessarily. I mean, you know, you could have someone that is hired part-time that is called your park ranger. I mean, it's, you know, there's ways of doing it that wouldn't have to involve the police. So, that's, this is...
This is our initial discussion of this.
For flexibility, that's all. Yeah, it's just the initial discussion. Think about it, what I was, what we can do is, if there are any issues, any questions, we can address them at the work session when the entire board's had a chance to look at it. And then they can, provided there's a desire to, it could be scheduled for a public hearing.
So, I do have two quick questions. One is, what do we get to?
You want to be on the list?
I want a deputy badge. The next thing, the serious question is, I noticed in a couple places that they were deputized, you know, it was like the superintendent or his designated, right? Do we need to have any kind of, what triggered me on this is, it's a smart idea, the idea to have a, you know, maybe a part-time park ranger, especially during summertime, whatever. But I'm wondering if we have to put any other kinds of constraints, like they have to be duly trained in the enforcement piece of code that they're going to be enforcing? Is that one of those kind of stupid things that you don't have to say in the code, or is that something that you assume?
You know, you don't have to say it. I wouldn't say it's stupid, but you know, you don't have to, you don't have to say it. Presumably, you're only going to have somebody issue, like, what's duly trained, you know? I mean, put it in, what is it? But presumably, you're only going to have somebody that you've told, you know, what the rules are and, you know, the circumstances, whether your policy is to give a warning, you know? I would think that...
I just wanted to ask the question.
We avoided going into such detail in this code, for example, so as the spell out, well, you know, the clerk treasurer can enforce this but not that, or...
But like superintendent of Parks and Recreation...
Could only enforce whatever.
Can't, you know, do DPW, it got too crazy.
Yeah, we decided that it's, that's more of a management thing and it's how you implement it, and so, training would fall into that category, in my opinion, anyway.
So, the DPW would be, if this was happening, DPW would be issuing an appearance ticket to some violation of...
You know, someone that leaves their garbage out, it's too heavy.
Right, or leaves it out.
Leaves in the street, not stumbling in snow, you know, the same thing.
Whereas...
We shaved the code on that, but yes.
Whereas rec would be issuing, I would just imagine dogs off leash would be high on the list.
Well, that certainly was one of the traders that talked about this.
And fire inspector, I mean, yeah, there's a logic that you could assume, it's only in the area that you have expertise that you would be doing this, and there might be a way of saying that, or they're...
Yeah, we didn't think that was necessary.
Right, it might not, it might be a way, it just might be administrative procedures that we'd be aware of and we'd realize that, you know, there were, you know, careful controls that this doesn't become, too many people can just start telling people, you know, you get a ticket.
No, but this is us, this is us, this is the village, so, you...
Another one that you didn't mention, Chris.
I'm sorry, I missed one.
I'm sorry, I was cross-talking, my apologies.
No, the first question though, was, yeah, it was, which items perhaps would I be involved in? So, I gave one example, sidewalk cafes. So, we give a warning letter to those storefronts that have them, that haven't renewed them, and maybe on the third time around will be a final warning that we need to have a permit for a sidewalk cafe.
So, we have a whole system in place where they get their permit and they go through a procedure, but in a case where somebody doesn't follow that and you...
As a matter of last resort.
Yeah.
It's a last resort, you know?
There's rules, they have the permit for the sidewalk cafe, but they're not bringing in, one of the rules is you have to bring in the stuff at night, and you're not bringing in the stuff at night. So, then you can...
There's a whole series of quality of life.
I mean, we can...
That's a good idea.
You know, and we, of course, if there's something in our, in our code that we decide is not necessary, or, I mean, we changed the liability thing recently for sidewalk cafes, right? So, if there is something in our code we wanted to change, because we said, oh, we don't really want to enforce that, we might want to change the code, that's a little separate issue. But, well, I think we can think about this, and we're obviously not going to make any decision. There'll be certainly time for public comment, for people to think about this, and if they have thoughts, they can write letters or make comment at the end of tonight or at some other time. But do we want to go any further with this now?
I mean, unless you have any other questions, but we'll bring it up at another future meeting, that's all.
I think it's, I think it's great for, especially for that kind of fill-in, part-time concept for when you have various problem areas that you want to address.
Yep.
And the other thing you should know is, it is a typical provision in code. It's, you know, it wasn't like some creative thing just for Irvington, it is not unusual to have a provision like this in your grant.
That's interesting that we didn't. All right, so, we'll put that aside for now. And that brings us to number 11. Yes? Approval of grant agreement with the New York State Department of State Throughway Authority. So, I think everybody knows that we did receive $187,000 grant, which was entitled Irvington Theater District Revitalization Project. And this is, I think, I guess, I guess I should, Larry, you might want to give us a little background on what is different or what changed.
Okay, well, first of all, yes, the grant agreement covers the roughly $187,000 grant, which is for the, what we're calling the Town Hall Theater Plaza, whatever you want to call it out here, the connection from Main Street to the theater entrance and the cleaning up of that area. Of course, all of this will have to wait until the construction on the building is done, but that's, that's okay. So, since you received and have seen a copy of this grant agreement, Mary Ann's reviewed it. We held a meeting on Thursday with the Throughway Authority, at which time we raised a couple of questions, some of the grant recipients, and the Throughway Authority was responsive to some of those questions. And so, they did make some modifications to the agreement, which I...
I reviewed, they're fine.
They're fine, they're, you know, nuts and bolts type stuff about effective dates of the agreement and things like that. It really just makes the agreement work better. They also did change the scope of our contract a little bit, which helps us. They included a component that they had previously removed, and I asked them to reconsider and put it in. The element is the signage, the Wayfair signage, you're getting a designer to design the signage and being able to purchase at least some of the signage to install. And they did put that back in the contract.
Nice.
And that's it. So, well, we'll see if we have enough money for it, that's the next thing, but that'll, we'll develop that over time.
Adopt a sign.
Right. They need to give me extra money, they just need me the ability to spend it if we have it, so...
Is this matching, or is this straight out?
No, it's not, no match.
It was a straight... Just not even timed.
Grant, didn't say grant.
This is a real grant.
The grant, and with the most reasonable agreement I've ever read.
Yeah, that is true.
This is only applied to...
Compared to some, there's agreements you'll read that'll say that, you know, if partway through the thing, for some reason it has to stop because they don't have money or anything, you gotta pay back everything they gave you. It's the accounting ones usually say that. But this is so, I was like, whoa, you know, because usually I've sent to Larry all these comments, recognize this, recognize that was a really reasonable, not only isn't it a lot of money, it's a really reasonable agreement.
It's a win-win. And there are only nine communities, I think, that were able to get this. And we're really happy, we're really happy about this, it's wonderful.
It could use to, those of you who worked on this.
Many, many, but yeah, it's great. So, what, the reason this is, is because the contract changed and we need to approve that?
Well, I think the resolution, we can slightly modify the resolution just to say, make reference to the agreement having been revised, so the revised agreement's being approved.
Okay. Can I get to that part? Make sure I stop and put revised. All right, so, I'll read, I'll make this motion. Resolved to approve the revised grant agreement, is that what I should say? Revised grant agreement with the New York State Department of State/Throughway Authority to provide $187,090 for the project entitled Irvington Theater District Revitalization Project to be located in the Village of Irvington, and further resolved to authorize the village administrator to execute said agreement and any other documents necessary to effectuate the provisions of the grant. So, I move that. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that is agreed to. All right, so, that was number 11. So, the next item is the one I added, which has to do with the state legislation that is currently under review in the state senate and in the state assembly. And this refers to the recent reassessment and the increased tax payments that are befalling many of our community members. And I think most people know, this is, the reassessment was undertaken by the town of Greenberg, but the state is looking at some legislation that will phase in the effects of this, and it's actually in the form of an exemption that people could apply for. So, the issue, and I have a message from Brian that he fully supports, sending some kind of support letter and showing our support for the efforts in Albany, both by our senator and some other senators, as well as our assemblymen and some other assemblymen. So, I can read the resolved, or we can discuss it a little bit before I actually read resolved. Do you have any thoughts on how you'd like to proceed with this discussion? Shall I just go ahead and read the resolved?
I think it was, I think this is fairly straightforward.
Right, yeah.
You know, municipal support.
Right, that's what we're talking about. So, this is adoption of the residential revaluation exemption, this is, this is the new title of it, and it's numbered A 10416 and S, that's senate, 7942, by the New York State Legislature, and to direct the village administrator to forward to the appropriate state legislators a copy of this resolution along with a letter of support. Now, I can, I can read the letter of support?
Yes.
Okay. This one, this is one that's, as the model, written to Senator Andrea Stewart-Cousins. And dear Senator Stewart-Cousins, as the elected officials of the Village of Irvington in the town of Greenberg, Westchester County, we strongly support residential revaluation exemption S 7942, which you have sponsored in the New York State Senate. We respectfully request that you continue to devote your strongest efforts to ensuring the passage of this bill. We are greatly concerned about the potentially devastating impact of the sudden and severe property tax increases resulting from the recent reassessment by the town of Greenberg. While we remain in favor of this long overdue effort to correct glaring inequities in property assessments, we strongly support this bill's purpose of phasing. With the passage of this bill, some significant number of property owners in our community will experience an essential mitigation of severe financial stress. Our board in 2010 publicly expressed support for a phased-in approach to property tax changes resulting from a reassessment. We, the current board, continue to support that point of view. And that would be the letter that came from us. Any comments?
Yes, I think that our board really does need to do this, to take a stand to support this legislation. I think our state assembly person and state senator needs to hear that we, a village that was particularly at a strong impact by this reassessment, are in support of passage of this, mitigation of the impact. Saying which, however, we are also very well aware that people who are due, who may not experience the tax reduction to which they were entitled, are feeling reluctant to put off getting that reduction when they feel that they've been overpaying for many years. There's no perfect solution here, but in balance, with upending the reassessments or the change in the taxes, it's just simply a matter of giving people a little time, especially those who are going to have a very large increase. It doesn't mean that the people who are due to have decreases don't get anything. It means this will be phased in, but the burden for paying for this will be phased in over everybody, including people whose taxes don't change. So, it will, it will not have a dollar for dollar impact on people who are supposed to get a reduction. But this seems to be, to me, and to those of us who've been talking about this, a fair and reasonable way to simply protect, best protect everybody during a difficult adjustment to this new process.
All right, any other discussion?
No, I think that's a good, good place to leave it.
All right, so...
Do you need to take a vote?
I read the resolution. All right, I read the resolution. All right. I, I moved, as, as I read in the earlier resolve, towards the adoption, so I moved to accept that. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so we'll-
And this is rather urgent, I hear.
Yes, there are only six days left.
Yeah, we'll be transmitting this tomorrow.
Yes, yes, there are only six days left in the legislative system. And this is the necessary first step for the, for the state to pass this, and then it falls upon Greenberg to, to adopt it. So there, there are many steps, but, you know, this, this is, this is a helpful step by my analysis. All right.
This is a slide before we, should we be sending a copy of this as well to the Greenberg Town Board?
I would, I would, sure.
With the assumption that, you know, keep them abreast of our thinking.
Yeah, good idea. Yeah. All right, so that brings us to liaison reports. Mark, do you have anything?
Well, we basically covered everything with the, this Friday, June tenth is the, is the deadline, midnight, submit your short PSA pedestrian safety videos, please.
All right.
And, and the standard comment, that there's a, there's a number of groups, of committees, Environmental Conservation Board, Tree Commission, and I'll say GPTF, Green Policy Task Force, are all looking for people to get involved, especially if you're interested in issues of sustainability and environmental issues, concerns, please get in touch with us, get in touch with Larry, and find out what these groups are about, what these committees are about, and when they meet. And you'll find it very interesting.
Okay. All right, I have a liaison report from trustee Gilberti, Department of Parks and Recreation. There are nine items on here, I'll read some of the highlights. Day camp registration continues, that's Maureen DePaoli is where you get information on that. Teenscape Summer Travel Camp is ongoing, contact Angela Thornton for additional information on dates and fees. The 2016 Village Park passes are available, you would want those before July fourth, no doubt. I think people know from our last meeting that we are scheduling the Fourth of July celebration in Matheson Park this year. Number six, Boomer and Carton, that doesn't mean anything to me, but obviously it does to some people. Boomer and Carton from WFAN Radio will lead a team from their sports radio station against a team from the Hebrew Home from Riverdale at six, Matheson Park, and Mission is Free. And congratulations to Mayor Brian Smith and the caring committee of Eileen Bishou, who will both be honored by the Westchester County Recreation and Parks Society at their annual awards luncheon on Friday, June tenth. Okay, and if you'd like to attend, let Laura Copman know.
Yeah, I totally forgot, and I really think we should bring this up.
Yes.
I just found out a few days ago, our resident, village resident, Anne Jaffe Holmes, who was an early leader in the Climate Protection Task Force, I think she chaired it, and then she was quite strong in the Global Green Policy Task Force, coworker with Lubin Leven, will be getting an award from the FCWC, Federated Conservationists of Westchester, and that will be Thursday evening at, up in Lazden Arboretum. So I just wanna give a shout-out to Anne, and say congratulations.
Great.
They have two organizational awards and one individual award.
She certainly deserves it.
Yeah.
All righty. All right, I'm gonna try to put some of my issues together. The Irvington Housing Committee has a date for their next meeting, I'm gonna have to look to another page here to get it, I think it's the fourteenth.
Fourteenth.
The fourteenth, okay. And there was just a question, we did read the change in the mission statement, I would just, as a follow-up, if, if maybe you or Karen could change it online, the mission statement, I don't think anybody objected, we added the word about, you know, keep, yeah. It's an important concept, though, it's only a word or two. So that should be officially listed on the, on the mission of that committee. There, there is the historic district committee, they are reviewing, I have a little communication from them. Just, I might ask, I might ask you to go ahead, Janice, while I find the part of my notes here.
Sure.
Go ahead.
The water department, actually, honey, already covered the mailing, the extremely useful and informative mailing that went out. That was, that's, I think, the main thing from them this period, and the Department of Public Works, I love this, are assisting the nature center with the preparation of rain gardens, and they're also filling pot holes, painting crosswalk, painting and cleaning catch basins, yes. Also, just a shout-out for how really dignified and lovely the Memorial Day ceremonies were, which the, in which the highway department assisted the parks department with organizing that, thanks to all.
Oh, I missed it this year, I do hate to miss that. All right, so the Irvington Historic District Committee has received the latest draft of the draft guidelines, this is coming from Steve Tilly's office. So that draft and the, the committee members have begun to review that draft from, this is a, this is an ongoing process. Tilly, Steve Tilly's firm was hired to, to work on this, what's going to be visually beautiful document.
And informative.
Oh my gosh, yes. You'll, you'll, you'll be amazed. So they're preparing for a meeting with the, Steve Tilly's firm on June fifteenth, 2:00 PM, in the library. And they also expect to review the draft that Mary Ann worked on for the local landmarks legislation. I did also, I did think I already said that the farmer's market met, met, they do something, they don't meet, they, they had their, they had their market this past Sunday, I, I walked in early, and nobody else was there, but it looked like all the vendors were back, and it was, looked like it was doing well. I asked them if they had a report, I don't think they managed to get an answer to me, I think things went pretty well, nobody heard differently. Larry, you didn't hear any problems or nothing? Okay, I think that's, I've been in touch, of course, businesses, and there, there will be a third Thursday this, in June, and at that third Thursday, whichever that date is next week, the sixteenth, I think it would be, that, that third Thursday will feature a preview of what will be on Celebrating Irvington, and we hope that Rip Van Winkle might make it there to the bank, if at all possible, you never know.
I gotta, we gotta talk to Amy and find out what's going on.
Right, 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 right. All right, I think that's the end of my report, the, Brenda, do you have any?
Nothing this week.
Okay. Mary Ann?
Nothing.
Larry?
Just quickly, the next department head meeting on Monday that we have, we've invited the, the new president, de facto president of the Chamber of Commerce to attend.
Oh, really?
So she'll be attending that day, just to introduce her to the departments.
That's great.
I mean, there's certain departments are more interested, of course.
Right.
Closely connected in, with what she does, but be interesting.
Who is it, Larry?
Samantha Endlich?
And, I just got a email from her, I asked her if she could come, right.
She doesn't have a business here in town.
Oh.
She lives here.
Oh, interesting.
Actually works in Brian's building in Tarrytown.
Right.
That, that, right about there.
No, I, I had a communication with her, let's see, she, I asked her if she wanted to come and say anything here tonight, she's not, not quite, Samantha Endlich, E-N-D-L-I-C-H. And she's been in touch with some of the businesses, and has a Facebook page for the chamber, she's looking into, also a meeting with the Tarrytown Chamber and the Dobbs Berry Chamber, trying to navigate the legal paperwork to set up the official nonprofit status. So she's working hard for our local businesses. So that's great that she's coming. All right, so any other public comment? Doesn't look like it. Review of current action items?
So there were three items, the first was to update the village website to reflect the parking status of the train station parking lots.
Okay.
And mentioning that Metro North manages Irvington, we'll make that a little more easily friendly. The resolution that you adopted about revaluation will be sent to the Greenberg Town Board, and-
And of course, the other.
And the last one, well, yeah, of course, but in addition to what the resolution said. And then to update the housing committee mission statement.
Right, okay. All right, so we are going to adjourn, I have a, make a motion to adjourn, second, all in favor, and I think we have a session coming up. Okay, all right.
Okay, can you go right there?
Bye-bye.